And I think this time it fell under the inner review of the board.
Yes, it must be.
Yes.
No, this is not mine.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know how it does this. How do you make it bigger?
Bigger.
Why did it do this?
I don't know. I've never seen it do that.
No. Mason.
Is that my hall?
Help me with my iPad.
Oh, Mason's right there, did you need him?
Yes.
Oh, no, he isn't. Mason.
How do you make this a full screen?
You want to go full screen with that?
Yes, I don't know how to, because I click it and usually it goes straight to Safari. Here, go ahead and do whatever you need.
Like, why don't you have it on Safari? Why don't you do a bookmark on Safari?
Which from my home.
Because you went into the email to do it.
Yeah, I just.
But if you put a bookmark on Safari, then you won't have to go through that.
I'm always the challenging one.
We can go, she can look on it with me.
I'll look on, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry. I'll look over her shoulder.
Lord, I'm gonna have to start bringing extra bags to carry all stuff. Oh, I have one done.
That's a good idea.
I ordered a gray one.
It doesn't want to cooperate.
I'm hoping it's big enough.
Should I just let it survive and just go on?
Yeah, ordered the tone and two T-shirts.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Yeah, I've got everything right here in hard copy.
It was the inner review of policies, and these policies were the board's policies this time. So, did anybody have any comments?
I did on the one point one oh one. It's the, or four point?
Yeah, one point one oh one. Oh, I'm looking at, hello.
Yeah, you need to.
Just turn that over, thank you.
It lists the different functions that the board is required to do, and I went back and just kind of compared it because I have that handy-dandy training manual from the TSBA. And one of the items that was not on here that was listed was vision. So, I was thinking that maybe we should have taken the opportunity while we're looking at this and just added number five that says vision.
Can I? Yes, I have a couple suggestions too, but go ahead.
So, looking at your question, I have no problem considering a number five. I think maybe we take some time this month to bring it up, a revision next month, and I'll be glad to work on it with you or whomever. If that's what we want to do, we do have a vision. So, I think, you know, I want to make sure, I mean, our vision is part of our strategic plan.
Well, I don't disagree, I'm just, when I read this, just you would say like our fiscal planning is a part of our budget, but it's still listed here as a function that we have.
Okay, so, yeah, we can, I don't have a problem with doing it.
And I'm in no way saying we don't have a vision, I'm just saying that as our board, I just think that when I was comparing what we're supposed to be responsible for, I just saw that that was one of the items.
But so, why don't we?
Why don't you just say strategic planning as your fifth bullet?
I mean, I would, I would, I would like to use the word vision, then we could say as a part of our product strategic plan, only because vision is what's used throughout the TSBA like much, but you and I can work on it.
Would that be acceptable?
That's fine. And you just bring the word vision back to everybody?
Can I?
Yes.
I've got a problem putting it in there, only because as the board, as the state sees that we have four functions, one is policy oversight, two is educational planning, three is fiscal planning, and four is promotion. When you bring up the planning in the new school board member orientation, and I pulled mine out, it talks more about what types of planning. And it goes into an annual agenda, it goes into a timed agenda, it goes into a consent agenda, it goes into three rules of consent agenda and planning procedure. So, it goes more into, it doesn't really put vision as one of them, so.
Does that, it does have vision out there?
Well, I think what it, and then what it divides, what she's saying is what it divides, what it divides it down into as types of planning, the agenda, the consent agenda.
Right, but vision.
And then also what it's talking about of planning is the annual plan and the long-range plan. So, that's what it's talking about as part of, part of the vision is the planning. And what there's, what she's saying is they're saying, what they are identifying as planning, annual agenda, time agenda, consent agenda.
It's a different vision than what you're looking at. It's the vision.
Well, maybe that's been revised, I thought I had put it on my back, I didn't bring it.
She has it right here.
Okay.
It's the same, it's the same one as I have, except they just kind of changed it up a little bit. Mine's back from thirteen fourteen.
Yeah, and they list it in the planning section, but they also list it in basics of boardsmanship, which is the visioning part of it.
Right. But we have vision in our strategic plan, we have vision in our facilities plan, we have vision.
Again, I'm not, I'm not saying that we don't, that that's, just like, again, I go back to the educational planning, it's listed in here that it's a required function, I'm not saying, I would hope that no one would read this and think that we don't think we have educational planning, or that we don't have fiscal planning. Since we broke those two things out from the planning, when I was going back through and just kind of doing a compare and contrast, especially as we're looking at, I just think that having that stated as a required function as the board, we just need to make sure that we're holding ourselves to that, because we are responsible for the vision of this district. And I don't, when I looked through all of the different policies, I never really saw that spelled out anywhere, and I just thought that that was something that we should do.
Well, and if we're looking at potentially creating something and then bringing it back in December, then I think we have something to discuss, whether or not its wording is something that we find appropriate or not. I think now we're just talking about what this may be or may not be, but until Betsy and Suzanne come up with wording, and we can say, you know what, I really don't think we need that, or you know what, maybe we do, or I see the wisdom in it now, then I don't think there's anything really to discuss until we have actual wording to it. I mean, that's just my opinion, we can.
That's fair.
One, two, and three are state mandates, vision is not, so, that's all, that's all I wanted to point out.
Okay. Well, if you want to work on a section on planning, that would be great. Next is revision of policies, IP four point six oh two, honor roll awards and class ranking.
Well, first I want to say, kudos to Houston Hyde for a great request. Very well thought out, very well presented. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Makes life easy.
Welcome, Mr. Cherry.
Yes.
So, I asked Mr. Cherry to join me with this policy revision tonight because he, like you've seen in that explanation, he's done most of the legwork in the research behind the request to have the change to the cum laude system.
Sure. To give you a little bit of the background, we're actually sitting in a PTA meeting, and about a year and a half ago, I think it was just after, after the start time changes, and we were talking about unhealthy practices. And I said, I think the way we do a class rank is an unhealthy practice that we have. It creates unfair competition, it's not realistic, so, and I thought Sula Lee was gonna hug me at that first meeting, she guessed, because her child was up there chasing that, chasing that. And if you look at, you know, if you look at the difference between our top three students and last year's data, we're talking less than five one hundredths of a point. Are we that scientific that we can separate like that? So, and this also broadens our distinction, so we thought, let's take a pathway that broadens this. So, now, instead of honoring just our valedictorian, salutatorian, and our top five, now we're looking at top ten as being summa cum laude, top twenty, ten to twenty being magna cum laude, and then the top thirty percent, laude, cum laude, I'm sorry. So, that brings a broader, and we're still going down to three point nine, GPA of three point nine, which is not too shabby. So, that was, it just, it took that off the board. Now, we do have another option, you know, one of the things we talked about was, so, we came up with a number of that, and that's basically an analysis of last year's cohort, I had a twenty seventeen graduating class, and that's where the breaks were in the deciles. So, for summa, you know, it was four point four, I believe it was, all right, and then went down to four point one, and then three point nine. So, that's kind of where we set that. The other option is possibly just leave it as the first decile will be summa, the second decile will be magna, and the third, so, there's an option, I'm flexible.
I think, I think that's better because it keeps the board from having to go back and calculate a percentage each year. What you're saying is you're recognizing the top, top of the class. Because you don't really do that with valedictorian, you don't say, the valedictorian is gonna have a GPA of X, so, why would you do it for this system?
Well, the, I would, I'm playing devil's advocate here a little bit, knowing how some students function of, I want to be summa cum, or I want to be magna cum. Having a number to reach for helps, because it's, it's like a target. And if they don't have that target, it's very difficult, and they may miss it because they just edged out of that.
I think, I think the reason they're gonna know is the way we do our transcripts and the way we do class rankings, so what we're going, what they're gonna see is a percentage.
Yes.
So, if they know that they're in whatever the number that, what were you saying, ten?
It'll be deciles, so if they're in the first, they're in the third decile, they'll be right there.
So, the top ten percent, top twenty percent, top thirty percent.
That would be the, that would be the GPA education percentage that we'll have to look at, is how are we, how are we informing them that?
Right, but then how low could summa go, or not summa, how low could cum laude go?
That's a good question, because if you think about it, if students, as they say, as we interviewed them, Jake being one of them, I would take, I would have taken this course, this course, this course. I'm choosing my course selections based on AP and chasing that GPA. Take what you want to take, be happy. So, I would expect probably a little slip in the GPAs, so, and that's where we would have to either modify it, you know.
Do we want to put a hard, do we want to put a hard bottom to it, is what I'm saying, is?
So, and so that may be.
Like a hard bottom and then move, move up from that hard bottom.
Just, I see your point with that, because it does give students who have a four point three right now, that say, okay, if I can just push it up to a four point four, those that really want to hit that top level and know for certain.
That they'll get it.
And that's why we put that quantitative number out there to say, this is it.
And I, that's why I kind of lean more toward that myself.
Yeah, I would, I would think that especially as we're going from one to the other, they're so focused on a number right now, it might be hard of a transition, maybe there's a way that we can move that way, you know, potentially to get there, but I think it would be good for them to have maybe that, that fallback.
And we're talking about, and we're talking about rolling it in with the incoming freshmen.
No, current freshman.
Current freshman.
Yes.
Because we don't want people who have sacrificed, like my son would be devastated at this point, because he has skipped out on so many classes that he would have loved to have taken, if we moved the bar now and took that from him. But, so, we don't want to punish kids who have really pushed, like you said, they had a goal, they're chasing it.
They're pushing towards it, right.
Pushing towards it, so, I think that's part of that education piece is.
That's a good point.
Let's give them a window rather than a ladder.
Right, right. What do other schools do, I mean, it said in here that fewer than half of the high schools now use a class rank, what are the other schools?
They're using the system.
And do they use a point system, or do they use a?
For instance, Williamson County, who we always compare ourselves with, I think they go down to three, seven, five, for their.
But they have, they have a numeric range versus the decile.
Yes.
Is there, I mean, have you gotten any feedback on if there's a preference for that around all the different schools that use it?
Haven't, I have no preference.
I'm just curious if there's feedback.
I just, I know there's always that, what about the valedictorian scholarship, what about the salutatorian, if there's something out there?
Right, right.
And that's why we would put on the transcript, this, the first decile is from this to this, so obviously if you see I have a four, six, nine, and the top is four, six, nine, well.
Right.
And so, what, what happens with the districts that do this, they will have eleven valedictorians, they will have twelve, so those competing for those scholarships can put down that they did have the highest GPA. So, when you, when you create it like that, that's what's common.
In fact, I think it black.
So, if they're the same, maybe I didn't read that.
Yes.
So, how do you get, how do you decide the eleven, if it is eleven, for the valedictorian?
Well, really, truly, we're talking about, you know, doing way with valedictorian, salutatorian.
They'd just be vying for the scholarship.
It's just if they're putting that on a scholarship, so, if you're talking about who speaks at graduation, what I hear a lot of the private schools do, other schools, they have a vote of those people who are in that top decile for who's gonna be the speaker for their class.
But how do they get to say that they're valedictorian?
If they're in that top decile.
Top decile, okay, that's, okay, that's.
Or whatever we would come, whatever we would come up with.
Whatever, yeah, so, the summa cum laude would be the valedictorians, and the magna cum laude would be, okay, that's.
Well, we can go back to the top five percent, which is traditionally what we've honored at graduation, they sit in the front row, so.
Is that fewer than half the high schools, is that just in Tennessee?
No, it's nationwide.
Okay, very good.
Yep, we're actually kind of a little bit behind.
Okay. Because Williamson County implemented it last year, and when we started talking about it at the beginning of this school year, he was pulling research and articles across the nation, and I was pulling, I mean, this is my folder of all the, this purple, I didn't even want, but that was my folder of all different districts that have gone to it, and why, and how long they've been in that system, and how it's helped, and what it's really done with students who are wanting to take different courses, but not necessarily all your APs or those that are heavily weighted. How does that correlate to what colleges look at, you know, the point, I mean, how does it?
And that's why, that's why we do this, that's a good point. Is, it's not the old days where they would say, oh, here's valedictorian, here's your scholarship, here's salutatorian, here's your scholarship. They're looking at the rigor of your courses, and that's where the education piece is. They want to see that you've challenged yourself and that you've succeeded in those courses, they're looking at your transcript as much as how you fared, and that's important too, so.
The National Association for College Admission Counselings, counselors, they have the top, sort of the top ten things they rank, so it's grades in college prep classes, rigor of academic schedule, student GPA, ACT, or SAT score, and then class rank. So, class rank is slipped down.
But their GPA is still up there, so, even though it's not the, the rank, so what I'm, so where I'm going is, will we still, I'm assuming we'll still have the number there, would we still, as our guidance counselors, be able to give guidance on kind of what that GPA expectation would be for certain colleges? I mean, is that out there, I mean, so that they, because they're still gonna be focused on that number, it just won't be compared to other people in the high school, right?
They'll see this outright, so they'll know that they're within that range.
Right, but if you're looking at a college and all of the other applicants are going that have a higher GPA, because maybe, you know, I'm just trying to get a feel for, how do you compare yourself? I don't know.
And GPA is gonna be a different discussion, because, you know, we're living this right now.
Right.
Because what they're looking at is, high schools across the state and across the country use different GPA scales, so whether it's weighted or unweighted GPA, so they're, they're taking that into consideration anyway, the universities, so, they have all of that, and that's one thing that Ms. Little does a really good job with, our students, is talking to them about the requirements for all of the schools. And usually it's a sliding scale of GPA with ACT or SAT, and so it's, it moves up and down, it's kind of like clearinghouse for athletics.
So, they just won't have that additional pressure of where they fall in the class ranking?
Yes, so, class rank is just a separate item for that.
So, I think this is great, and a couple of things that I like about it is, is it does free up, like Jake said, it does free up the ability to take some classes that they, they may not have otherwise taken, because they were worried about where their class rank was. But this, to me, is kind of two sides of the same coin, we need to make sure that we're providing the opportunities for them to take those additional classes, so, you know, whether that's fashion design, or interior design, or, or coding, or STEM, or whatever those classes are, my hope is that we see an increase there.
Yes.
Okay, and if we see that, we need to make sure we're providing and promoting those classes. I think we're gonna have to, the education piece is not just gonna be, this is how we're going to do your class rank, or this is how we're gonna do summa cum, whatever, it also needs to be, so you can do, and here are the classes that we offer. Because I think for a lot of those kids, they don't even look at those classes, because it's just not, it's not part of the.
It does have honors attached.
It doesn't have A or honors, so they're unaware.
But I think what you also have to do is, is let them, and the district office, academics in the high school need to look at those, those CTE courses, because many of those we've had in place for a long time, and see if they still need to be there. Or if we need, or if something else it needs to be in place that maybe brings a certification, or something like that. I'm not saying, yeah, I'm not saying, yeah, I'm not saying eliminate, but I think we need to look at that.
And that's part of our process.
I think there's a balance to it too, though, because, you know, some of these classes that the kids are taking, they may not be seeking a certification, they just want to try out what it's like to, to do some interior design, or horticulture.
Yes.
Let me just see if I like it, and, and I don't, I, I think we need to be careful that we don't eliminate opportunity from some of those classes that may have been there a long time, but they haven't had the audience, because we've been doing that different thing.
I agree a hundred percent, and I think that's one of the things that the high school does a great job of, is the only reason that classes kind of wither and die at the high school is interest.
Right.
We don't say typically, no, we don't think that we want interior design anymore, the students stop signing up and taking it, we can't staff the class, and so I agree with you a hundred percent, and that's, and that's what they do.
I think we're gonna see a shift, my hope is we see a shift there because of this, and I think we will.
I think based on their quotes.
It's gonna be a bit, but we need to make sure that we're not quick to eliminate some of those classes until we have that turnover happen, that mindset change.
I just think we just need to be, because we do have a very, very small percent of students, just a small percent, that are not going onto college, and so I just think we need to make sure that we do have some courses that offer them some.
Epsos.
Yeah, that offer them some certifications, I'm not saying eliminate things, I'm just saying, look, let's look at it and see, make good decisions, because we do have some students that aren't going onto college, a very small percentage. But I, I think we also need to, you know, see that we have opportunities that they can get certification, so that when they leave the school, if they're not going to college, they do have something, like Mr. Juneau's class is often, you know, certification, Cisco, and things like that, that's been added. So, things like that, I think, are important to have for those students.
And I think it's important that we maintain the attitude and the encouragement that not every child, college isn't for everyone.
No.
I mean, some children.
Kids graduate, thank you, Lord.
Well, but, I mean, not everybody.
You were waiting on that one.
She had it in her back pocket.
And also the fact that it doesn't always have to be a four-year, because sometimes it takes kids a little longer to figure out what they want to do.
That's one of the things that we've been talking about, yes. Tennessee promise.
I mean, that's a huge opportunity for some children to figure it out, you know, and get serious about it before they do move.
Yes. We sent you the email today, where our T and promise numbers are down for registration, because a two-year college is not beat, you're a four-year college and this, so it's, it's hard to get them to do.
But a three, two years moving on to a four years may be a great.
Yes, and parents are like, yes.
Well, and those that you want to get into, it's a lot easier to get into some of those colleges that you might really want to get into, but that are tougher to get into as freshmen, but you come in as a soft.
Established, yes.
Established student, it's a lot easier, so, that's, I think that is part of that education.
And I think to your, also to what Linda said was, you know, I think we engage our students with variety, and especially those that are on that cusp, they get, they, they need something that engages them to be there, otherwise, they're just gonna tune out all of it. And y'all know that, I know I'm preaching to the choir there, but.
And that's why we want this so bad.
And I think this is, this is a step in the right direction.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Cherry? Well, just two things, actually, one was, doing that, I would think is gonna take more time, because you do have to do the education, you have to spend more time, and that's not bad, I mean, that's a good thing. So, just as we're thinking about that, as we're, I hate to say that we're close to budget season, but we are getting close to budget season, is to think about as we roll something like this out, and we're gonna need to spend more time on looking at electives, and spend more time educating our kids, is, you know, is about the staffing that might need to change as a result of that, because I think that could be, I mean, you're only as good as the time you have to let people know that and educate them, so. And then lastly, just because it was on here, I'm gonna take the leap, because I know there wasn't a change to the four point six oh oh for the grades, but it was just listed on here as to ask the question about, because I always forget, and the superintendent's been nice enough to educate me, but I can't remember, is the, an A being a ninety-three versus a ninety, and how our GPA, when you compare it to other, and going back to colleges, if I'm applying to a college, and there's somebody else who goes to a private school that's going to college, or even maybe some other location in the nation that has, an A is a ninety-three, I mean, an A is a ninety, and we have an A is a ninety-three, so I might have a lower GPA. When you were talking about the weighting that different high schools do that, do they take into account that differential of what an A is?
They do look at that, and this is something that Bartlett is trying right now.
Right, I remember.
We have the uniform grading policy that says we have to have that grading policy, so you have, and so I was working with the staff today, talking about, how could it work if, if they did do something different to calculate it, because you talk about man-hours, essentially, we would be running four transcripts at that point, because we have the weighted and unweighted transcript that we have right now, you'd have to have a weighted and unweighted for a new policy. So, the way Bartlett is finding a loophole in the uniform grading policy is they are running two transcripts. I talked to Dr. Kite about what she's experiencing there, and there are pros and cons to it. One is that child who's a solid B student is okay, but that child who is not, who's a B C student, they could, according to the ninety to a hundred, eighty to ninety, seventy, eight to eighty, that student could go their whole experience going through high school, and you talk about the education piece, thinking, I've got it, I'm gonna get the Hope Scholarship. But the reality, that student who's a B C student on the eighty to ninety scale, ninety to a hundred, is really a D C B student with a lot less Bs, they wouldn't qualify for the Hope Scholarship. So, those kids who are at the bottom, and it hurts the children at the bottom end of the spectrum, helps that kid that's just a solid B student, because you talk about, all of a sudden, that we have, they have more As on their schedule. Those down here, it hurts. This would be something that is a much bigger topic for us than this policy with magna, summa, because what I would ask is, same way we did with this, is first, I always say, second mouse gets the cheese, let's let somebody stick their neck in the trap and see what happens first.
Last I talked to them, they hadn't even figured it out, how to do it, have they?
Yeah, they haven't figured out how to do it on, in the computer, or track it, or with staff tracking and stuff, so, let them complete this, this year and see what's happening. But at the same time, with us also have Dr. Park's department.
because you do have to do the education, you have to spend more time, and that's not bad, I mean, that's a good thing. So, just as we're thinking about that, as we're, I hate to say that we're close to budget season, but we are getting close to budget season, is to think about as we roll something like this out and we're going to need to spend more time on looking at electives and spend more time educating our kids is, you know, is about the staffing that might need to change as a result of that. Because I think that could be, I mean, you're only as good as the time you have to let people know that and educate them, so... And then lastly, just because it was on here, I'm going to take the leaf off because I know there wasn't a change to the 4.600 for the grades. But it was just listed on here is to ask the question about, because I always forget, and the superintendent's been nice enough to educate me, but I can't remember, is the, an A being a 93 versus a 90 and how our GPA, when you compare it to other, going back to colleges, if I'm applying to a college and there's somebody else who goes to a private school that's going to college, or even maybe some other location in the nation that has, an A is a 93. I mean, an A is a 90 and we have an A is a 93, so I might have a lower GPA. When you were talking about the weighting that different high schools do that, do they take into account that differential of what an A is?
They do look at that, and this is something that Bartlett is trying right now. We have the uniform grading policy that says we have to have that grading policy. So, you have, and so I was working with the staff today talking about, how could it work if, if they did do something different to calculate it? Because you talk about man-hours, essentially, we would be running four transcripts at that point because we have the weighted and unweighted transcript that we have right now. You'd have to have a weighted and unweighted for a new policy. So, the way Bartlett is finding a loophole in the uniform grading policy is they are running two transcripts. I talked to Dr. Kite about what she's experiencing there, and there are pros and cons to it. One is that child who's a solid B student is okay. But that child who is not, who's a BC student, they could, according to the 90 to 100, 80 to 90, 70 to 80, that student could go their whole experience going through high school. And you talk about the education piece, thinking, I've got it, I'm going to get the Hope Scholarship. But the reality, that student who's a BC student on the 80 to 90 scale, 90 to 100, is really a D, C, B student with a lot less Bs. They wouldn't qualify for the Hope Scholarship. So, those kids who are at the bottom end, it hurts the children at the bottom end of the spectrum. Helps that kid that's just a solid B
Right.
student, because you talk about, all of a sudden, we have, they have more As on their schedule.
Right.
Those down here, it hurts. This would be something that is a much bigger topic for us than this policy with magna summa. Because what I would ask is, same way we did with this, is first, I always say, second mouse gets the cheese. Let's let somebody stick their neck in the trap and see what happens first.
Last I talked to them, they hadn't even figured it out, how to do it, have they?
Yeah, they haven't figured out how to do it on, in the computer or track it, or with staff tracking stuff. So, let them complete this, this year and see what's happening. But at the same time, with us also have Dr. Park's department, Mr. Cherry's department. If we could just say, let's go to the 90, 100, 80, I would be all in. If we didn't have to do the uniform grading for the Hope too.
Right.
It's the fact that we'd have, we have to run both consecutively that poses the problem. So, for me, it would be say, yes, I think that's something that, and Dr. Park and I talked about this too, that we would be interested in, in looking at. We just want to probably take this next semester and...
Gather all the information.
And if it's children, go ahead.
Yes, and learn from Bartlett.
Well, and also this is maybe is that some of the Skyward can do.
Yes, we, we think they can, but...
But let's work out the keys.
Yes.
Lots of options.
Because it still hurts some students.
Right.
Yes, and the numbers and percentages. It's going to help some.
Right.
And if you look at the way Williamson County does it, they don't, they don't do the Hope, they have a, they have a really, they have like a three, like 97 to 100 is a four, 94 to 97 is a three, seven, 91 to 94 is a three, five. They do the pluses, you know, but they started, so... And then they don't do their, and but, so they're, so they're basically the totally different scale. But then they don't do their Hope Scholarship with, with the uniform grading policy until they, after they don't. And to me, it's like being on a diet and not stepping on the scale once in a while. You have to stop and do it. So, we would have to do that, and we'd have to do that uniform grading.
That would be really tough on kids to know whether or not they're anywhere on track.
Here you are, junior graduating, oh, I guess I didn't.
Either I made it or I didn't.
They are 91 to 100 is an A, not 90 to 100, it's 91 to 100. And then 81 to 90 is a B, 73 to 80 is a C. So, that in itself is a little bit more difficult.
Well, good. We get to, we get to watch and learn
Yes.
I think that's great.
From Bartlett and see how it's going to shake it up.
That sounds great.
Any other questions?
Thank you for the education. So, okay, on this policy, there was the two suggested ways of calculating. Either the decile or the numerical. So, I don't, we need to kind of decide before we approve a policy? Or do we bring it back? Or do we bring it back? Because right now, it's at the, it's at the number method. And I, do we speak to what we prefer at this point, or?
I would say for, I would say for first year, because we can come back and revise.
Okay.
What I would say is, let's go with the number right now, because like you said, it tells students
Yes.
here's what you have to aim for. And the reason that we want to do it now is because when we come back after Christmas, that's when they start the scheduling for the students.
Right.
So, they're starting to decide their classes. We want them to start thinking, oh, I can now make some choices.
Yes.
So, so we want that to be part of the discussion.
I'd like to see it stated later in the policy.
Good.
I'll feel good. I agree with that.
And if we, if this is something that the, we look at the numbers and they're not right, and we, we can come back and revise that policy to make it deciles.
I think if we had a few years in to look at where, where it falls with the deciles, then we could have a pretty good standard cutoff that can last for a long time. But it would give us a few years of...
We're asking the information that you say last year's data was, these were the score. I mean, something to that effect, rather than having a policy, just more of a, this is what the cohort of 2018 was.
Right, right.
Okay, sounds good.
And on the policy, I'm sorry, on the line 11, where it says effective with graduating classes of 2015, 2016, I'm just trying to understand why we have those listed. I'm sorry, do you have that, Mr. Cherry?
That's line 11.
Line 11. I just didn't know if that's, if there's a reason we were looking back in this.
We're still graduating class 18.
Right, but the, 2015, 2016.
This is carryover from some of the issues that we had when we merged Germantown schools
Okay.
with GMSD schools. So, we had an issue, we had a couple of issues. One was, we were dealing with IB courses at Germantown High School of students that were bringing them over with us. And the issue we had were, they had none, because what happens with class ranking, it's all about opportunity. It's taking the most honors or AP or dual enrollment courses that I can in each increment, ninth grade year, 10th grade year, 11th grade year. So, we had to clarify what those pre-IB courses they have as freshman and sophomore wore at Germantown High School. So, those pre-IB courses weren't true IB courses because they're not taking the test at the end. It's not like an AP class where they're taking the test, getting the certification. They were really more like honors courses. So, at that time, that's why we had to define each of the graduating cohorts or cohort. So, if you're bringing over IB with you and you were, you know, a Germantown High School student, that's why we had those, that information in there.
Okay. So, after this graduating class, we can delete that whole section because we...
Because we have already gone through all of that.
Yes.
Got it, got it.
But the 23, I thought we were not going to delete line 23.
Yeah, well, it's a, it's a, we talked about that, does it have to be a, is it a procedure? Does it have to be in policy? I don't think it has to be in policy. But that, but that is the way that they're calculating it. The red.
The red.
Yeah.
That's the one that's referring to those classes, so you can leave it until this, into this year. Is that your concern?
I would, it would be my preference to delete it.
So, just leave that, to your point, if we come back, we'll probably know more about what do we want to get in deciles? Because we're going to probably revise it again, so we can just take that out when we revise it the next time.
Yes, so leave, leave 23 and leave 11 the same because it clarifies that merge process that we went through.
So, we are leaving 23.
We're going to leave 23.
Just to kind of keep it all intact until we delete it all.
Classes where the pre-IBs.
Yeah, but...
But they were given, they were given...
That's what I'm saying, the IB classes in grade nines and tens, they were wanting the full IB bonus points.
So, I do, if we're going to leave that, then it's changed from IB classes are equal to, based on the new grading policy, advanced placement courses. So, I will need to revise that to say it's equal to advanced placement courses. So, they'll get the additional four points instead of three.
The problem that you're going to have is...
This is the discussion we have.
Yes, yes, this is why we were having, the problem that you're going to have is, those aren't true IB courses that they took in their ninth and 10th grade year because they weren't taking the IB class at the end and certification.
Yeah, so that's why we decided to delete it.
So, then it creates, then it creates an argument of, was it IB, was it not IB, was it pre-IB, was it...
And I think having that line there gives Mr. Cherry a, a way of saying, this is our policy.
Well, since this is first reading, no.
And, I'm sorry, I just thought of...
IB classes is play, is described, true IB classes are described in our grading policy, what they should be counted as. So, I don't know why.
Whether that...
I think it'd be okay if we deleted that because it is laid out what your IB courses count as in your GPA on our grading policy.
And does it define between ninth and 10th IB courses and...
It's, if they are IB courses, and that's where you could look at it and say, if they're true IB courses, then you get the four based on grading policy, not an honor roll.
Is that a discussion that Mr. Cherry's going to end up having to have with parents about what is a true IB course?
Do you have a lot of parents now not...
It resulted as a, from a situation a few years ago in which...
The question that I'm more curious about is, so it may not, you may not have any students that this applies to. When they change the grading policy for the state and said IB count as many points, is that retroactive or is that going forward in the future? So, I don't go back and change class rank or GPA that previously took it. So, if, it's not necessarily whether they took it in ninth or 10th grade. It's the, so if we put a year classification on there, if we just took all IB classes taken prior to the change in board, state board policy
But if it's...
as of this date, then it, it serves the same function. I'm not worried about students that are coming.
Again, this was a situation.
Do we have the IB in the grading policy? Because I couldn't, I didn't see it.
So, you see what I'm saying is, it wasn't, it was a matter of time that this happened, not a matter of what's happening now with students.
But if it's in the grading policy, do we even need it in this policy?
And the only people we're worried about...
I just didn't see it in the grading policy.
But these students that were affected in the ninth and 10th grade, what is, where are they now?
Well, to play out the story, a student moved in from an IB school.
Right.
Junior year, okay, they met the four semester requirement, bumped to valedictorian. And the, the salutatorian, then valedictorian pitched a fit and thought it wasn't fair.
And had a legitimate concern because they had taken all the quality points they could, and it gave preference to students from outside the system versus students that were in the system.
So, I think we actually took it out of the grading policy.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it in the grading policy.
In the valed, so who are we worried about?
So, maybe we just leave it in there and just take it all on the next time.
This is another reason to get rid of valedictorian, salutatorian.
Right.
So, who, who are we really concerned about? Are those people who are still chasing valedictorian?
No, she just said it isn't.
Salutatorian. So, you're worried about the current seniors? The current juniors and the current sophomores.
We don't offer IB, so then we didn't put it in.
Which makes sense.
It makes perfect sense, because we did that last time. I remember that being taken out, rightfully so.
For the current valedictorian, and I have to go back and check, for the current policy on valedictorian, don't you have to be at Houston all four years? Or no, it's just four semesters?
Four semesters.
You just have to be there.
That's what happened with the same case too. So, this would be the last year of a student moving in from an IB school that could jump the valedictorian.
Yeah, but if you open that...
I mean, again, that's a maybe. If we had, if we, I know that, that might have been a one time. But again, if we were to have another kid come over from another IB school or move from a city that has an IB program, and you're, you're going to have this issue.
Well, let's just, let's leave that in there and then just change it where it says honors to advanced placement to make it align with what it's supposed to be based on the state grading.
The ninth and 10th?
That's still deletes, so that still hurts our kids because they, our kids couldn't get as many points as those kids coming from an IB. That's, that's our problem. So, a kid coming from, is a junior who took those pre-IB courses, and that's where your argument develops, they're going to automatically be ahead of them.
Do we need to say IB courses completed with the IB exam?
My question is, do we need to pull this from the agenda? Because it sounds to me like we're not ready for this.
It's just this one line, because I want to give them the chance to...
Well, it's first reading.
Right, what if we, what if we...
Because we can make a change.
Leave it until second reading.
Leave it until second reading, y'all come back.
That's a good idea.
And let us know what you think. Give us a recommendation.
Well, I think I've got a solution there. I think if we put the year, the only reason we're having to address the IB counting as AP is because the state school board changed their policy. It's not retroactive.
So, what year are you going to put?
So, what we're talking about is, it is, I'll, I'll find it out before the meeting and do the change. So, saying all IB classes in grades nine, 12 will count as honors courses prior to the school board change and put the date.
State board change.
State board change. All courses taken after that will count as, the new policy will count as, will count as AP.
So, do we not need to, this is just first reading.
Yes.
Do we not need to have all this worked on between now and the December meeting so that we get the wording and everything correct?
Why don't we just do that? Why don't we go ahead and put this to them first reading?
As it is, as it is, if it's taken out and you can come back and add it.
But that'll, that'll be the change that we recommend.
Because we can make changes.
That makes sense, perfect. Good job.
Okay, okay.
Well, I just have one, one question on the honor roll with the standards. Are those, do we have those? It just says that they're approved by the board. I was just wondering if I could get a copy of those. I couldn't find them anywhere. I was just curious what they are.
So, you don't, that's why you could...
I don't know.
That's the superintendent.
We're going to make sure, we're going to make sure, we're going to work on it.
So, we're going to leave it as it is, and then the superintendent and Dr. Park will come back with a correction to that sentence.
Yeah, so leave, so the recommendation is to leave line 23 because that doesn't change anything from our previous policy.
And any change will come in December.
And we think we do have like line 18 because it says effective with graduating class of 2019, that we've taken care of some of the year...
Issues there.
But we will, we will clarify to make sure.
Let's do it second reading.
In between first and second reading.
And then you can come back with a change.
No.
Ms. Jones's question.
Um, in the first part, we're talking about the honor roll. It says that there's standards that are recommended by the superintendent and approved by the board. I was just wondering if I could get a copy of those standards.
Sure.
I just, I just couldn't find them. I'm not sure they exist. I just couldn't get out there.
Any other questions for Mr. Cherry or Dr. Parky?
Thank you for your work on that, Mr. Cherry and Dr. Park.
That's, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Definitely possible.
It's never easy when you're changing grades and GPAs, so thank y'all.
Child abuse. We're not changing grades.
We're not changing grades.
Charles Blan.
You okay?
This is simply a revision of a revision. We, when we made the revision, we left some language in that TCA had removed. So, we now model the TSBA.
What did you change? What, it wasn't Mark and Yellen?
We took out the immunity part.
Okay.
Part five, and also the definitions portion. It's all, it's defined in the new policy, but there's no definitions section.
So, this was a recommendation from TSBA.
In a model there's...
Based on the TCA requirements.
Any questions for Mr. Blan on the child abuse and neglect policy? Thank you, Mr. Blan.
Dr. Park, come back on.
Yes, Dr. Park, next, approval of textbook adoption for 2017, 18?
I'm just going to try to sit every chair.
There's no car for musical chairs to them.
That's true. Okay, so, the textbook adoption forms that you will see, we have fine arts, physical education, and science that will be up for review this year. So, every year, based on Tennessee's procedures for textbook adoption, we have to have committees set up with teachers and community or parent representatives. And for us, we contacted all of the schools to get the suggestion, suggestions for the parent representation. And those you will see listed on the form for you. If you don't see years in public school or any of that, that's because it's a parent or a community stakeholder. And the process after they are approved is to have this, the people on the committee come in and go through an oath to be able to serve and to go through the orientation process of what the actual serving on the committee will consist of and how they will start ranking all of the materials that we go through.
Questions for Dr. Park? No questions? Okay. Next on the agenda is the budget amendments, 20, 21, and 22.
And I'll cover this, Mr. Jones is not here. So, we'll start with number 20. If you remember, and we will have more of these positions to present to you. We talked about the changes that are coming with the title funding, and we had the list of all the positions that we had. Some of those have indirect costs that we pay out of general fund that go with that. This budget amendment is for one of those. It was the last one that was approved on the list, was the federal program senior accountant responsible for monitoring compliance with federal purchasing guidelines according to ESO rules and education departments. So, this is a position that you already approved. This is a budget amendment that's just to support that. So, we do have an increase in BEP funding, and so that's what Mr. Jones is paying for this position, position with. And so, that's budget amendment number 20, if you all have any questions on this position. If we go to 21, it's another recognition.
Has that been, has he been hired yet?
No.
Okay, thank you. It's November 2nd.
We have to post it. We have to go through all that process. But what he would like to go ahead and start posting that position. And so, hopefully, if they will ever approve our federal funds, and we get those in, which should be soon, then we will start hiring these positions and you'll see them come online.
Thank you.
The next is another recommendation of increased revenues because of BEP, so that they do monitor our growth in the district. And so, we do have more funds, and so the recommendation is to put this into architect fees and it's new fees for the district office. Remember, we had approved going through that, so we can decide whether we're going to bid that as one package or two, or do it as an add-on or a deduct. So, this would help pay for that, and so it wouldn't deplete Mr. Kathy's current architect fee account that we need to have for the new school. Are there questions on the architect fees? And then the last one is one that has, well, it's not you yet. We got one more budget amendment. I know you want to do the co-ops, they're coming. We have budget amendment number 22. This is a recognition of the Safe Schools Grant.[1739.44] And so this is, Mr. Blan, I don't know if you wanna say anything about the safe schools grant, but this is what Mr. Fisher, or not, this is what we use for cameras, security, badge access throughout the district. And so we upgrade all of our facilities and infrastructure with this funding. And so that's budget amendment number twenty-two.
Any questions on budget amendments? Next is the approval of cooperative membership.
Um, there are two cooperatives that we would like to join. The first is National IPA, the second is US Communities. Both will give us a range of other vendors that we do not presently have access to. There is some overlap, but we don't have presently access to with the cooperatives that we're members of. Are there any questions regarding the cooperatives in general?
Um, is there, to be members of the cooperative, is there a required participation rate in terms of usage? I mean, do you have to participate, you know?
This is a free service for us where we can get low prices on nationally bid goods for us.
Okay, but we don't, we're not required to use them if we can find someone who bids lower or?
No, absolutely. In fact, we, we get information with each requisition on how we use the cooperatives with each vendor, et cetera. So if, if we see that we're tracking, like with paper, we could actually carve that out and go for a contract in that particular case.
Okay.
So not tie hands anyway.
Okay, that's, that was my concern is that we're not, you know, tying ourselves up to something that we can't have an option.
It's not like the record clubs that you join and then.
Right. Every month, you get a new record.
Yeah, you get a new CD.
If you don't like it, send it back.
You're paying twenty-five hundred dollars for it. Um, no, there are vendors who are multiple, members in multiple co-ops.
Yes.
And they will help you actually find where they're the lowest in certain excellent areas, so.
Right.
Okay, any questions? Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we're just going to add on, Armington Board. Kaye Williams had sent me a copy of a resolution that you should all have on the A through F. And, I think I emailed it to everybody as well. Basically, this was a resolution that urged the General Assembly to repeal the letter grade A through F that was gonna be assigned, or is gonna be assigned to each school. And basically it's saying to repeal the letter grade. So I, I guess it's up for discussion whether we want to have a resolution, a resolution such as this.
Well, and it says either repeal it or um, in the alternative required, not take effect until we've had a, a school year actually pass with no issues and.
Of testing.
Of testing, right? I mean, so.
But then we major testing issues.
The one thing that I know that the superintendent had mentioned is, you know, another option is to break it out so that it's not one letter grade. It's potentially have each of those, yeah, like a report card versus an overall. So, I mean, I, I think it's um, I think making a statement is a good thing. Um, I think the question would be what, what statement will we be comfortable with?
I want them to get rid of it whether the, the testing goes through or not. Because to me, it's not, it doesn't matter to me whether they have a, a full year of success with testing. The, the problem is it's a flawed system to start with.
Yes.
So I don't wanna give them that out.
Correct.
So could, should, would we be more of the mindset of it's not, we don't, it's we either repeal it or we amend it to have it individual criteria? Or do you just get it all?
And I'm good with whatever because we're, we're taking a stand, but I, I agree with you that it's, it's more than just this, the testing issues that are, have not stopped yet. It is the fact that.
We're gonna have one letter grade.
S, S says, the, the new federal guidelines say that you have to have a grading system. It doesn't say you have to have one metric.
That's right.
And the, and you've heard me give this speech to all of our representatives. The fact that the State Department of Education is trying to boil it down into one letter grade is less transparent for all of our stakeholders. If you want to put a highlight on chronic absenteeism or achievement or growth, let's spell those out and let the parents look at those and say, oh, this school has a strong achievement score. This one has a low growth score. This one has strong attendance for a district. But the second that you get in there and start weighting it, then you have, have changed the transparency for the stakeholders. And that's my concern is that it becomes less transparent. And that's a concern.
So, I'm, I'm not comfortable with, with this resolution as it is, as much as I would. I do think we need to pass a resolution because I do feel we need to make a stand soon. I just am not comfortable with it for those reasons.
Well, you can, it, where, and if, those are the two concerns that have, in the second to last paragraph is where it says, repeal public chapter six eighty, or in the alternative required that said legislation not take effect, you would wanna eliminate that or.
Or, or we could have the or and it be individual grading of individual criteria, if mean.
I don't know that we can, I don't.
Too complicated to spell out?
That's what I'm wondering is how we would spell that out clearly in a, in a resolution.
I agree with you.
You keep it simple.
Yeah, I think that's, you're taking, you're gonna get too in-depth.
I say we just say, just stop it.
Yeah.
Yep.
And do it, you know, just stop it.
It's flawed.
And then negotiate your legislation.
Right.
Um, why don't we go ahead and, if everybody's, everybody can go ahead and look at it again after our meeting, but whenever they could look at it, and right now, the one change that we have is to take out or in the alternative.
Yes.
That will delete that, that line and that, right now is the only thing that we're deleting. And then we can, we can look at it and bring it back.
In December?
In December.
Yeah.
If we passed a resolution last year for the vouchers, does that stay effective or is there more power to re-insta, you know, to, to basically, I mean, I know that it's out there, but I don't know that our legislators who are there now, you know, i- is there any, is there any um, would it help us at all to just kind of restate that we've done that? I mean, I, I don't know how to do that, I don't know.
How to communicate that.
Yeah, how to communicate what our resolutions are, whether we send that to our legislators and our city and, you know, as a part of a communication once we pass this. It just says, as we're going into this legislative session, realize we've passed these two. I just, I just don't want that one to be lost. This one comes out, but.
Almost like you renew it.
That's right, yeah, exactly. Don't, don't think we've taken the eye off the ball. We still believe that we don't, we shouldn't pass this, especially if it's gonna come up early in the session.
A resolution stands until the resolves are met or until you rescind it as a body. So it stands. It's just as strong today as it was the day we passed it.
But I think it's only as strong as they know, as, as they're reminded that we've done it. So do we just remind them that we've done it?
Yeah, I mean, in doing that as TL, TLN, you can say we have a resolution on.
When we meet with them, when we meet with them individually.
Yeah, you remind them of our resolution.
And I think that, as we've met with our legislators, I mean, that's the, that's probably one of the, you know, of the few topics that we are adamant about is vouchers. And so we have brought that up to all our legislators.
So maybe we can also bring it to the breakfast in January just to remind them as to what.
We can give them copies.
Yes, exactly.
Let's share our copies. Sounds good.
Are there any other items that are out there?
We also passed a resolution in regards to the vetting. And I'd like to send a copy to all of the municipalities on that one too.
Sounds good.
It was suggested to do that since it didn't pass the um, TSBA. But I'd like to go ahead and send it to all the, the six here and go ahead and address that. And I can write the letter, but I'd like to send a copy of it.
Does that need to go through the board chair or does that, is it okay to go through Lisa?
Oh, we'll.
Okay, I just didn't know if there was a protocol with that.
And thank you, Lisa, for bringing that up because I think that's an important tool.
Well, now, we've pa, we've passed um, we passed it as a resolution to take, but did we pass it in this form as an official resolution for the vetting? Or, I mean, is that something that we should do to add credence to it?
We passed it to take it to TSBA.
I'm just saying, if we're gonna do a resolution for this, I'm wondering, do, you know, is there more power in the formality of an official resolution of saying we would like for the legislature to, to consider this? I don't know, I'm just, I don't know.
That's what we were asking for the General Assembly to look at it. So whether we do it through TSBA or we do it through the General Assembly.
The format that you use, the reason you use the, the whereas is to put your, lay your facts out.
Right.
You, it's basically laying out your rationale.
Exactly.
Before you hit your resolves.
Right.
So it would be easy to do, but how you do it, it's, it's still a resolution. The board still has approved it as, as it stands. It just, it just has a rationale after what we voted.
After the resolution, we, we sent it to him and he sent it back, but here.
No, she was talking the format.
I'm just, I'm just talking like in this format where it's actually signed by the superintendent. It's signed by the chairman so that it's actually more formal. So that if we're at that breakfast and we have these three resolutions, we can hand them and it gives them the facts. To your point, that's where it lays out whereas, 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 and then this resolve being.
I mean, that, that's a choice. I think it makes it stronger because we know what the arguments are, they don't. And if you can lay out in, in the number of wheres as you need is, it just.
Right, no, yeah.
You can have two.
Right.
I mean, but it's basically taking your rationale and, and laying it out prior to and then therefore being resolved.
And then it might make it easier for the other municipalities to take that format and take it on and approve it and might get a better hit rate potentially. And then we could potentially have both of those to bring for the next board meeting to approve. So I think it's a very powerful committee.
Any other topics before we adjourn at six thirty?
So this is not gonna be on the agenda tonight. This is for next time.
Yeah.
Just making sure that my ducks in a row.
And if I can do anything.
And we'll be eliminating the one sentence.
One question that I had on my, and I, I just had it on my list, I don't even know why I put it on there, but um, bus contracts, is that something that's coming up or?
Yes, we've been talking about that. That's gonna be a discussion for this board. Probably in Mr. Kathy we're talking about today, December, January.
Okay.
That we have to, we have the option to renew with our current provider.
Right.
We would obviously make revisions because there's discussion of penalty. Other municipalities, we're no longer sharing. So we would obviously take all that out and have a new contract, but at the same terms. Um, or we can go to bid, that's something for the board to discuss. Or we can try to look at financially doing it in-house. All those things would be a discussion for the board. So my guess is.
January.
The sooner the better. I know if we were to go with another company, they have to be able to get the.
That's right.
Equipment together in order to serve.
That's correct.
And is it there, and I'm assuming the bidding takes a while, I mean, it takes time.
Yes, correct.
To get the bids out and all of that, okay.
Mr. Kathy, do you have a recommendation?
Certainly.
When we need to make that decision, December, January?
Regarding bus contracts, um.
Do you want December?
The sooner, I mean, the sooner the better on that. If we're, if we're gonna put an R and P together just to give other companies a chance, you guys remember when we started the district, that was really the, the lunch van. Um, we were trying to put it together, there was all the company in town, we had, and we really depended on Chevy County. So we're gonna give another company a chance to do it, it'd be a R and P, that is happening.
Okay.
January.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? At six thirty, we're adjourned and we'll start up in a few minutes.
Welcome to the Germantown Municipal, municipal school district school board meeting on November twentieth. At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. We'll begin with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Ms. Jones, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Next is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
May I to approve?
Is there a second? Roll call?
Ms. David?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Saul?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, the agenda has been passed. Next on our agenda is recognition and awards. Superintendent?
And I'll be, I'll be using two microphones for this. So first, we have two groups to recognize, the first is a little bit smaller than the second, but we can't thank both groups enough for how they have represented Germantown Municipal School District. So first, we are proud to recognize the Houston High School Girls Golf Team for bringing home the state championship last month. The girls golf team boasts some of the country's most exciting and burgeoning young talent. In the last three years, the team has taken the state championship twice. Coach Steve Bell leads his exceptional two-woman team. Bailey Park is a senior. She came in second overall individually at the state championship and she is headed on scholarship to Georgetown next year. And junior Jana Choi, who holds a record score of sixty-two, and she's recently, recently returned from winning the national two thousand seventeen USGA Women's State Golf Team Championship. Jana has committed to Vanderbilt. We look forward to seeing more victories from them in the future because of their hard work and dedication. And I'll talk about one of the most difficult decisions, which should have been one of the most easiest I ever had as a middle school principal, was what do we do with the two girls who wanted to be on the girls, on the boys golf team? That was an easy decision to make and they have been incredible for us and I'm proud that I was able to make that decision. We'd like to recognize them, so please, Coach Steve Bell, Bailey Park, and Jana Choi, please come up and be recognized.
The next groups that we'd like to recognize had, also had an exceptional season. So the Houston Middle School, girls and boys cross-country teams, both ran their way to glory, and there was also a state title in that mix. Led by the devoted volunteer coaches of the Houston alums, David Adair and Nicole Douglas, the team worked tirelessly in preparation for their meet. They ran three to four days a week refining their skills in speed work, hills, distance, all in the essential cross-country success. And they practiced the standard middle school competition distance of two point one miles to ensure they were ready for the tournament. These amazing efforts certainly paid off upon their arrival. The girls varsity and junior varsity came in quick and both took home first place in their division at state with standouts Gracie Owens, who ran the fastest two-mile time in the state, and Zoe Marsh, who ran the fastest two-mile in the time in the nation. These impressive ladies' success has continued with their male counterparts, led by Hayes Adams, who achieved the fastest two-mile time in the state for his division. The boys varsity and junior varsity made a dramatic leap from last year's thirteenth place to this year's fourth place. HMS was the only middle school team to take home a fantastic, these fantastic four awards. These extraordinary accomplishments, both at the state level throughout the season, were certainly a highlight, but the most important takeaways for the students of the cross-country are the friendships that they have, and we could not be prouder of how they represented us. You are truly an example of what it means for excellence always. It is hard work to go out there and train every day in as much as you do, and you have made us proud. And so we would like to call you all up at this time and we'll have to cram in here and have two steps so we can get a big group picture. Thank you all.
So I guess you start, go ahead. Yeah, we'll have to, if you want to step up, if you can, if you want to step up.
Yeah.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We will continue with our meeting, but if those of you who'd like to leave, you may at this time. And congratulations again to Houston Middle School Cross Country and to our Houston High School State Women's Golf. Next on the agenda is reports. Ms. Jones, T L N update?
On October twenty-fourth, I was able to attend the House Joint Education Committee meeting in Nashville, and the committee held discussion on several items. One of them was House Bill five oh one, which was the funding for three response intervention, instruction intervention positions within each public school in addition to the B E P. This committee also discussed House Bill five oh three, which would change the funding in the B E P from one nurse per three thousand to one nurse per seven hundred and fifty students. I was actually asked by the Tennessee Nurses Association while I was there to speak with them in support of this bill. Both of the bills were very well received by the committee. The committee did mention, unfortunately, that it is a result of budget. We have to wait until the budget discussion is to see if that goes, how far that can go. The one good thing that they did say is that we are ahead of where we were last year in the fact that these bills are already ready to go. And they are actually getting the time to discuss because they have not gone before the committee during this timeframe before, so that was a very big positive. Also, while I was there, Commissioner McQueen gave an update on the ten, the ten ready testing results and the issues that had come about related to that. The committee noted that it was the first time that she had really come to their joint committees to have a discussion, which they're hoping to do more frequently so that they can stay more in touch with what's going on. And it was obvious by the types of questions that they are voicing some of the same concerns that we have as far as the timing, not getting them quick enough even if they were all right, but then just the issues that have ensued. So more to come on that. Our board and superintendent also attended the T S B A Annual Conference in Nashville the first weekend in November. The T S B A Delegate Assembly held during its conference where there were several resolutions that were passed. The, I'll go through just the list of the names that are there in case you're interested, we can get more information. The state A C T S A T Accountability, bidding and sale of property advertisements, funding for the school nurse positions, release of T and ready scores, funding of the R T I positions, teacher licensure, changes to the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act, the graduation rate, moratorium on additional assessments, and release of assessment accountability information. More to come on those resolutions as we were discussing in our work session as we move through the session that starts in Jan, in January. We're also currently working with the other municipalities to kick off our legislative breakfast in January, similar to what we had last year. We also discussed in the work session that we will be taking copies of resolutions for certain items just to make sure that they understand the voice that we do have and the concerns that we have on certain things. And just a reminder that the one hundred and eleventh session for the legislature will reconvene on January the ninth, and it will be here, I'm sure, before we know it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Next is a chairman's report. Briefly, I just want to say the Germantown School Board, the board secretary, and the superintendent attended the Tennessee School Board Convention in Nashville, November third through fifth. Our superintendent, board member Ms. Parker, and Kate Crowder, communications coordinator, were one of the presenters for the sessions. They presented Moving From Transparency to Engagement: Mobilize Your Community in a Positive Direction. In addition, Riverdale, Riverdale parent Bonnie Lee was recognized as the T S B A statewide volunteer. She was recognized, I think last meeting we recognized her as the district, all the district winners or award, wardies are then put into a group and they select one that is a winner for the state. So again, Ms. Bonnie Lee was recognized for exceptional commitment to volunteerism in our school district, and she received a thousand dollar grant that I think she has designated go-to Riverdale. So congratulations to Bonnie Lee. Also, I want to thank and congratulate our students and teachers and our parents that were involved in Riverdale's Theater Rogers and Hammerstein Show, as well as Houston High Schools, our town, as well as Farmington Elementary's Madagascar. They were all presented in the last few weeks and they all showcased the many talents of our students. And I have to say, the highlight of Madagascar, since that's the last one I attended, their scene, I like to move it, move it, was just a showstopper.
That's good.
So congratulations to all our students and teachers and parents who put a lot of time and effort into the plays in our schools. That be it. Next is financial report, I believe, Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
You're going to fill in?
So we have three funds that I would like to highlight from the financial report. And so the first is the, from the report on total assets and total liability and fund balance. If you look at the School Operating Fund, the Tennessee Department of Education noticed, notified us that we will receive an additional one hundred and thirteen thousand in B E P revenue for the seventeen eighteen year, and that's due to a formula calculation update like we were discussing during the work session, and they're constantly doing that, so we're grateful for those revisions. If you look at the Cafeteria Fund, Airmark continues to report a profit year-to-date, which is now covering the district expenditures, and I can't tell you how far that has come as when we started as a district. We had a three hundred thousand dollar deficit in cafeteria because we have so few free and reduced students in the district. So for us to come to this point, it's a big step for us to be making that process, and we just want to break even because it's a separate, separate account for us, but they are doing, doing well. If you look at the Health Insurance Fund, there's a month-to-month comparison of claims expense that was added to the financial report. This is something that we always deal with when we are dealing with health insurance because we talk about the fact that claims could have happened, so someone could have had a major incident and we get that claim in one fiscal year. But there's lag that happens, so it could be several months before we receive all the bills or they receive all the bills for those health insurance claims. And so that's something that you will continue to see for three months after that fiscal year when we're dealing with health insurance. So know that that's something that we always track, but once again, this was another strong decision by the school board that we did our own thing with health insurance. We are the only municipality that has not seen an increase every single year in their health insurance accounts. And also, if you look at nationally, what's happening with businesses across the nation, we, the fact that we have kept our health insurance the same, rates the same for our employees over the past three years, that's an incredible feat for us and also built a reserve because we know there are going to be times where we're having more claims and having more issues. And then finally, on the O P E B trust, and I love this word, an unrealized gain. I want to keep receiving unrealized gains. That means that the market has performed better, the investments have performed better than expected, and so our investment performance in the O P E B trust reflects an unrealized gain of eighty thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars year-to-date, and part of that is Mr. Jones' work through this process. We also have eighty-three percent of the expected one hundred and twelve thousand return from, from last year. That's already been achieved, so the O P E B trust is doing good things for the district. And Mr. Jones should be back in the next week, he's having health issues, and so if you have further questions, we'll be able to answer those for you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next is the superintendent's report.
Okay. So I have some visuals that go with mine. So one of the things that we have talked about and discussed as a district is that we're going to have to look at our attendance zones because we are building and opening a new elementary school, and this is not only for the school board, this is for the general public too, because I just want to keep everybody up to date on where we are in this process and what's happening. And there was an original timeline that we sent out to the board that was probably very, very aggressive, and that's not going to be the timeline that we recommend, we're probably going to want to slow that down. So know that this is just a little tentative. We are still very much ahead of the game when we're talking about zoning for our schools because we're talking about the school potentially opening in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and so we do have fifteen months of construction that are going to happen. So we're trying to do this ahead of the game so that we get lots of community input. So at any point, we can slow this process down for the school board purposes. But I just want to give an overview, I've taken the PowerPoint that Mr. Bland and Ms. Dodd and myself shared with that committee that worked, and I just wanted to show the board just some highlights of the PowerPoint that we presented at that time. So we had three guiding principles, and these were the same principles that we had. Once again, this entire PowerPoint can be seen online if you go to our committee, district committees under parent resources. You can see the notes from the meeting, you can see all the slides, you can see all the information, and as we go through this process, we'll keep it on there too so that people can see what this committee is doing. But the guiding principles were proximity to schools. We want to zone families and students as close as they can to their houses. Second is where they're currently attending school. We don't want to upturn families. We don't want them to have to separate from where they're going, so that's one of the things that we want to try to prevent. And finally, we want to keep neighborhoods together as much as possible. And right now, we don't have all neighborhoods together, some are split, and usually this is a geographic reason for that. So for example, Poplar does divide some neighborhoods when we look at those, and those are already divided, but for the most part, we will try to keep neighborhoods together so that it makes sense. And this is one I won't go into a lot of detail on because obviously the board, we've talked about maximum and optimal capacities in, in the past, but we had to talk to our committee about how many students are we going to put in the schools? And so this was infographic that the board also has, but we talked about the fact that we have a number that we're targeting. It's really a number that the state tells us how many kids we can have per teacher, but we're trying to do the optimal capacity, which is two less than that in our grade bands. We did look at the demographers growth, and this is another infographic that the board has, a chart that shows our predicted growth for our elementary school grade band, our middle school grade band, which is the red at the bottom, and our high school grade band. So that's what our demographer predicted that we hired, and so you've seen a more detailed presentation of this. And then what we did was, we said we can't just zone for our current state. We don't want to do this a lot. It overturns family just status quo and it hurts children, so we don't want to zone every other year. We want to make sure that we can develop something that's consistent. So we were looking at the predicted growth for each of our elementary schools and trying to leave some cushion for the growth in certain areas. So in the committee, we did look at Dogwoods, Riverdales, and Farmington's projected growth over the next ten years. We also looked at another chart we, that this board has seen before. We were also looking at the current enrollments in elementary school. So we were looking at how many residents, how many non-residents were at each school. We were looking at the optimum and maximum capacity for each of our schools. So this is all information that they're going to use. And really, this first meeting was really just to catch them up to speed with what the board has already been part of, and that's all the information about where we are with growth and data and enrollment numbers. When we looked at our middle school demographer projections, we did the same thing. We looked at how many students were at each of our schools in each of the grade bands, and then we looked at the capacities at, currently at our Riverdale expansion and also at Houston Middle School, and looked at our number of non-residents, because that's something that we're going to take into consideration too. And we've been doing this as reducing the number of non-residents in our schools, and that's one area that we can deal with growth is by dramatically reducing those non-residents. And then finally, an even bigger one, and this has become more apparent recently as the Planning Commission is approving new groups and new, new buildings in our district. We asked Cameron Ross, and I'm not sure his official title, but he's in charge of the Planning Commission, he's the director of community development or economic development for the. He's the Director of Community Development or Economic Development for the city, I believe. But we asked approximately how many units were on tap over the next few years to be built in this area of the city. And what they've told us is 1,400 units. That includes apartment complexes, that includes houses, it's all types of residence. And so the challenge for us, and this is not something that we can easily do, is try to predict how many kids are going to come from these units. But we've tried to do that, and the board has also been given an infographic which shows how we try to do that. And we think we've come up with a reasonable way to do that, but it could be more aggressive. So here's the information, and this is just the divided infographic that the board has seen in the past. If we look at the historical enrollment in the city of Germantown, there are 15,303 residences, and that includes apartments and single-family households. So let's look at how many students are made from that. That produces 4,800 students for our school district, and so we create a ratio from that. That is a ratio of .31 students per household. If we use that calculation towards the build-out, towards those new houses that are being planned in the city, that produces students, and we have to look at all three grade bands. So we're not looking at just kindergarten through fifth grade, or sixth through eighth, or ninth through 12th. We assume that they're going to be spread out over all of those. And I'll talk about some of the flaws in this. That would produce 206 elementary school students, that would produce 102 middle school students, and that would produce 136 middle, or high school students. And know that what happens typically when families move into houses, they don't move out the second that their children graduate from high school. They will stay in those houses, and that takes those off essentially the books for us. So this is something that's going to have to stabilize over time. I think the biggest challenge for us, and when we talked, heard, we were at the Planning Commission when they were presenting this, the companies that actually build these have seen a .189 ratio for students produced. So we're, ours is more aggressive, but it could be a higher number than that. But at the end of the day, what I tell everybody is, we're building the biggest school that we can with the money that we were provided. And so for us, if there is bigger growth than that, that's something that this board is going to have to address with our funding bodies and know that we're going to have to take into account. But when we go through this zoning process, we are going to try to save some cushion for these students when we try to do the zoning, knowing that there is going to be some growth in this area of the city. So what are the next steps for us? And so this is just really, and this will be a big board discussion. We will have town hall meetings, we will have forums. What are the next steps? So for us, on December 15th, we have our second focus group meeting, and they're actually going to do a zoning activity. They're actually going to zone the schools. So I've provided the board members the booklet. This is also, we can have this online so that everyone in the community can see it. It lists for each school the maximum and optimum capacity, the numbers of kids that we want to put in those schools. And what we're going to do is, we're going to develop a base zone. And so you can see the bottom-left picture is our elementary school base zones, and these are not exact. And on our right are our middle school base zones. There are certain areas that just make sense that they're going to go to a school because of how close they are to those schools. There's only so many ways you can slice it. The areas that aren't colored on those maps are really the areas that we're going to be discussing about going to one school or another when we start looking at the zoning process. So there's not border territories, but those are the areas that are going to potentially get rezoned from one area to another. So those are our elementary and middle school base zones. In January, we're predicting that we may need a third focus group meeting. In February, we're predicting town hall meetings, FEQs, surveys, the same way we did with the site analysis when we chose the school site. We're going to follow a similar process where we really engage all the community in this process. And then we're predicting in March, having a board decision on this. Once again, if this board feels that they need more time on this, this is something that they can take more time on. Our goal is to gather all the information that we can for the school board and give you what you need to help you make a wise decision. So that's where we are with this process. We encourage everyone who isn't on the committee that they can follow along at home with all our resources online. And that concludes my Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next is Citizens to Be Heard.
I do not have any.
Thank you, Ms. Rowan. Next is the Consent Agenda. Tonight on the Consent Agenda is Approval of the Minutes, Annual Policy Review and Revision of Policy SP 6310 Dress Code for the Second Reading, the new policy SP 6.319 Alternative School Program for the Second Reading, Revision of Policies IP 4.602 Honor Rolls, Awards, and Class Ranking, and SP 6.409 Child Abuse and Neglect, First Reading. Also, Approval of Textbook Adoption for 2017-18 for Fine Arts, PE Wellness, and Science. In addition, under the Consent Agenda is Miscellaneous Budget Amendments 20, 21, and 22. And last, the Approval of Cooperative Membership for GMSD. Do I have a motion?
I move, I move to approve all items on the Consent Agenda.
Roll call? Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. The motion to pass the Consent Agenda has passed. Next is just final announcements. December 9th is the Holiday Parade in Germantown, and Germantown Municipal School District will be participating. And December 18th will be our next board meeting here in City Hall. At this time, we're adjourned. Thank you.